A productive couple of months in Washington, which is quite remarkable, actually. I've been there six years and we probably got more done in the last few months than we have in my first six years. Part of that was due to just some new faces. I think most of you know, last Congress, we had a problem in the Senate. We passed like 365 bills out of the House and the Senate never would take any of those up. And now we have new leadership in the Senate, and so as we send them legislation, they're actually working it, although the Senate is just a more deliberative body. The process takes longer. It takes 60 votes to clear most hurdles. So it's still very hard to get things through the Senate, but like I said, we've had a good couple of months here and we hope to build on it. One of the successes in my book is we actually passed a budget out of both chambers that balances without raising taxes. And each body passed their own budget and then we reconciled those two and then came back and confirmed that everyone was on the same page. I can't tell you how long it's been since a Congress has done that. I'm thinking it's been back to at least 2002 that the two bodies did just the basic requirement, and that is what every family does, is sits down at their kitchen table and drives a budget for the year. And so that was a success. Now we're in the process of marking up our 12 appropriation bills, and we were talking on the way here, that's kind of like when the family does the budget, then you still haven't paid the bill. You've just laid out how you're going to manage your finances for the year. Now we have to come along and like write the checks, and that is the appropriation bills that we write, 12 of them, is the goal every year. And again, that is a process that has not worked properly over the last several Congresses since I've been there. And so we always lurch to the end of the year and get stuck passing some kind of continuing resolution or something because like last year, the Senate didn't do any of their appropriation bills, and so we were left just with an omnibus bill. But this year, we started the appropriations process the earliest that I think we have in decades in the House. I think we've already passed three of the 12 appropriation bills. We're going to march through, hopefully, the rest of those and get to the end of July. Of course, the end of the fiscal year is September 30th, so our goal will be to hopefully work with the Senate to actually fund then these programs through the end of... What we're doing now is funding for next fiscal year, so October 1 to September 30, 2016. In addition to that, we saw a significant piece of legislation actually signed into law a month or so ago. Are any of you in the medical field? Any docs in the room? There's something that was used to pay physicians for their Medicare work called the Sustainable Growth Formula, and it wasn't working, and it was leaving doctors not being paid for their Medicare patients. And so what was happening is especially in rural Kansas and other parts of the country, doctors were leaving the medical field because they weren't getting paid to treat their patients, which is a concern to folks in this community and like my mama who lives in rural Kansas, because then access became an issue. They couldn't get access to quality medical treatment because your doctor wasn't getting paid and just stopped seeing Medicare patients or retired or left entirely. So we repealed that old formula and replaced it with something that is much more efficient. And in the process of doing so, actually got some reforms that had been in our House Republican budget the last several years to help pay for it. And I can't tell you what a significant win that was to actually get some savings in Medicare and all the while increasing access and giving our seniors certainly the certainty they need that their doctor is going to be around for years to come. And so that was a piece of legislation that had broad bipartisan support. I think what we finally figured out is there are some things that both sides can agree on that don't require any compromise because there are things they like and things we like. How about we try to do those in the next coming months? Find that common ground, if you will. And so we're going to continue to try to do that. One of the other big projects on our list is a transportation funding bill. We just last week synced up the authorization for a transportation bill with the funding source. And so at the end of July will be our new deadline to do something on transportation. I think most folks in Kansas anyway recognize that, you know, like the main function of the federal government is to protect us, national security. But certainly in about the top five issues or top five functions of the federal government is usually infrastructure spending, maintaining roads and bridges and the safety thereof with federal dollars. And so we've... We're very close on the authorization language, the public policy piece, if you will, and we're close on a funding source for that. I will warn you, it may take one more little kick to the fall, so at the end of July, we may have to just extend it another few months. About October, November, December is when we think we'll be ready for the pay for on that piece of legislation. So with any luck at all, we'll finally get a transportation bill that's like six to eight years. Again, that hasn't happened for years, folks. We just have recently just been lurching from crisis to crisis on infrastructure spending, which is no way to do that. States, local communities, contractors need some certainty, again, to know how to plan for proper infrastructure spending. So I think that's going to get done. In addition to that, of course, we've got trade on deck in the House. Next week, probably the next couple of weeks, we will be doing that. As you all probably read, last week, the Senate passed what's known as TPA, the Trade Promotion Authority. That is the process. That's the bill that lays out the process that will be used to open up new markets. The TPP, the Trans-Pacific Partnership, and there's a lot of letters here, and I know people get them confused. The Trans-Pacific Partnership, TPP, is the actual trade agreement that we are working on. But first, you have to lay out the process, and last week, that's what the Senate passed. And it is a good piece of legislation. I think we're making progress on how to put bumpers, if you will, on the lane so that any administration that is negotiating trade deals on behalf of the American people have an opportunity for us to have a say in that process. So you can imagine, an administration is trying to open up new markets. Most Kansans get trade. Our ag producers would not be in business if we didn't open up new markets. They wouldn't thrive. Certainly, the many small businesses that exist in the second congressional district are selling their products to aircraft manufacturers in Wichita, who again rely on new markets in order to thrive and expand their business. And so what the TPA this time does is it gives the administration the authority to go negotiate on behalf of the American people, to put together a deal. I think we can all agree, you can't negotiate anything by committee. That would be a disaster, is to put us all in the same room and expect that you would get to any reasonable conclusion. So it gives them the authority to go negotiate. But then, what the TPA does is it says, once that is agreed to, we will post the language for 60 days for the American people, everyone in this room and everybody you know, to be able to go access that, read it, and get comfortable with it. If you decide you don't like it, then you have those 60 days to contact your member of Congress, in which case, after the 60 days of that being available, the clock will start for us, and we will have an opportunity, after hearing from our constituents, to turn off the trade agreement or to leave it on. So you all are in the driver's seat on this trade deal under this current process that we've set up. You all tell us if you like it, we'll let it go through. If you don't, we'll turn it off. And we've never had those kinds of accountability measures in a TPA before, so I think we've finally figured this out. And quite honestly, it was driven by the fact that a lot of Republicans didn't want to give the Obama administration authority to negotiate on their behalf, but this puts us back in the driver's seat. So they can go do their work. If we don't like it, we shut it off. So we're really excited about the opportunity, especially again for folks in Kansas, to have new markets. Asia, Trans-Pacific Partnership is mostly the Asia markets where we could really see a bump in our economy. And Kansas, one in five jobs is tied directly to trade. So you can imagine the economic effect in the state of Kansas this is, certainly right here in this area. So that's going to be on our agenda for the next couple of weeks. And then finally, we are busy working on a solution to the Supreme Court case that is due to be announced at the end of June. Many of you have been following this for years. The Obamacare provision written into the law said that subsidies through the federal government would only apply if the states set up an exchange. Well, I think that was the intent of the law, but the IRS and the Obama administration rewrote that and said, well, we'll just give subsidies to anybody even if they didn't set up a state exchange. So those of us that are on the federal exchange would be eligible for a subsidy and be getting one right now. This lawsuit went all the way to the Supreme Court. They've already heard the oral arguments. The decision has probably already been made, but it won't be made public until about June 30th. What we are busy doing in the House is preparing for a judgment against the Obama administration. I'm not an attorney. I don't know what they're going to say, but a whole lot of experts in this area say the language is clear, the legislative intent is clear, and those in the federal exchange are not going to be eligible for subsidies July 1. And so there are going to be 7 million to 8 million Americans that have their subsidies recalled, pulled, they'll be asked to get that money back. And so Congress is trying to come up with some kind of solution for that. I'll tell you, it's very difficult to do that. Find something that we think we can all get happy with, that we think the President would sign into law. And so I'll just tell you, we're working very hard on that. That's taken a lot of our time on our committee. In addition to that, I will give you an update on tax reform. I think most of you know, in this room, I'm a fair tax advocate. Right now, we don't have the votes for that, so in light of that, we're working on an alternative comprehensive tax reform package. I will tell you, there is little hope that we would get that done in the next year and a half, because I think most of you know, once the presidential campaigns start in fervor, it kind of sucks the oxygen out of Washington DC and distracts a whole lot of people. And that's going to start this fall. So if we don't get some of this stuff done by this fall, we just lose the momentum to do so. And I think tax reform is going to be one of those that is a casualty of the presidential debates and campaign. So instead, what we've decided as a committee is rather than having tax reform on like an 18-month to two-year to-do list, we've moved it and we think we can get it moved in the next three to four years. So what we're going to do is lay out a proposal on taxes for the American people, and it will be comprehensive in nature. It will be everything from individuals to LLCs, S Corps, partnerships, all the flow-throughs, domestic C Corps, as well as international reforms. We're going to lay this out, and then we're going to ask our nominee to embrace it and help run on it, and then help us get it implemented in their first year or two in office. And I think that's just probably a practical approach to fixing a broken tax code. All the while, all that we're doing, we never take our eye off of just government overreach, in my opinion, and administration that's gone too far and lost sight of just common sense when applying rules and regulation. Our first meeting this morning was with a financial group in Topeka. They complained about the government overreach and the unrealistic regulation that is coming out of this administration. I hear the exact same story regardless of the industry. When I talk to ag producers, I hear it from them. When I talk to manufacturers, a lot of Americans, certainly Kansans, are feeling like they're being put out of business by an administration that's just pushing too far. So we do oversight on those things every day in Washington. We've had some legislative fixes passed recently. If you're ag producers, you probably follow the waters of the US, how they were trying to regulate navigable waters, which were just little like ditches and little streams running across a farm. And so we've taken a two-pronged approach to that. We passed standalone legislation that would permanently fix it, and then if that doesn't get all the way to the President and if he won't sign that, then we've attached similar language to the appropriation bill. But of course, when it goes with an appropriation bill, it's only good for the one year of the appropriation. So we'd still have to come along and fix it next year. But if we could get that, either one would take care of it, short term or long term. We've done the same with the lesser prairie chicken issue, attached that to an appropriation bill. So for one year, we'd get some relief from that. Because again, this is a big issue, especially in western Kansas for our ag producers and oil and gas producers. They've put this lesser prairie chicken on endangered species, left it, and they're protecting it and putting farmers and ranchers out of business. So it's really a major issue. So we're going to continue to do things like that, all the while, you know, moving legislation. So I probably rambled on long enough. That's just a quick view of some of the things that are going on in Washington. Let me turn it over to all of you to see what advice and counsel, questions, concerns that you all have. Yes?
On the trade agreement that we're talking about, and now, is that going to have anything to do with quotas, like cotton quotas and things like that? Because history and the fact I have had things stuck in customs for months because the cotton quota was...
Yeah, great question. We're going to do this trade agenda in, I think, four pieces, really. So the Process Trade Promotion Authority, TPA, has got to go first. Then there's going to be a couple of other pieces, and you know, the Customs Bill is going to be one of those. So that will be dealt with in that piece of legislation. And I can't guarantee you, I mean, it's possible that one piece of the four pieces of puzzle will pass and maybe that one won't, but it is designed that all four pieces will pass at some point. It just gets overwhelming. We've kind of had enough of these mega bills where you throw everything in together. That's just, you end up with a Pelosi saying you got to pass it to see what's in it. You know, we're not going to do that. So that's why we've tried to break it up into four bite-sized pieces, if you will. So Customs is coming. It'll probably be the third or fourth piece, so we'll see. And I have had an opportunity to look at the TPP, the negotiation, the actual Trans-Pacific Partnership, but I am not, I think I go to jail if I talk about what's in it. And so rather than, I don't look good in stripes. I think I'll just not comment anymore on the cotton issue than that. You all will have a chance to read it once it has been negotiated, and then you can give me feedback.
You know, I thought we had the federal estate tax and its various parts somewhat settled here in the recent years with the higher exemption and so forth, and maintaining the basis. And then it all got opened up again, and whose idea was that? The Democrats or the Republicans? And it really had me nervous because, you know, I think President Obama, for one, would like to eliminate the carryover basis, which for some of us could be about as disastrous as losing our exemption on that. And would you comment a little on that?
Yeah, yeah, great, great question. I think the administration opened up the debate with his budget and some provisions that were included in his proposed budget. But we took that as an opportunity in the House to lay down exactly where we stood on this issue. And so again, I've been there six years. I finally had the opportunity a month or so ago to vote on a complete elimination of the death tax. And I was pleased to do that because now the President knows he's not going to get changes going in the direction that he wants. If we're going to open up this discussion and a debate on death tax, we have the votes to totally eliminate it. I mean, it's just a fundamental difference between the parties, I think. You know, it is, but it's the right thing. You know, I was born into a family, we didn't have a pot to pee in. We certainly didn't have an estate. Right, we did. That's all that we needed. And yet, I understand at my very core, you tax people when they earn it. You tax them when they save it, when they spend it. You don't tax them, again, for the umpteenth time when they die. And this is a big issue for family farmers and small businesses. You know, I walked Secretary Lou one day through, I said, "Do you even know what a combine cost?" No clue. Well, probably not. I mean, do you know what a tractor costs? Do you know what an 80 of land is going for in Kansas? There is no understanding how quickly you get over that exemption limit, and then it's an issue, you have to go into debt or you have to sell off part of the family operation in order to just keep the business going. And it's just a fundamental difference. I'll take my lumps for having cast that vote because it was the right one to take. And so we'll continue to have this debate. He started the debate, but I'll tell you, if it goes any direction, we will be eliminating it, not moving the exemption.
I'm on the same side of the debate, but I'm a little bit on the leech sleeping dog side.
Well, right now, the dog is lying, but we had an opportunity to finally put the marker down where exactly we were in the House. And I bet if the Senate took it up, it would be an interesting vote. You know, they have a 60-vote threshold they have to meet to get on a bill. Some of those Democrats that are up for reelection this year are from red states and from rural states, I think like Nebraska. I wouldn't want to go home having voted in favor of the death tax if I were a liberal.
The next time that comes up, I would suggest that you school your staff in your office about what stepped-up basis means, because I was concerned, I called your office, and I think I got either to the third person or the fourth person before they had any idea what I was talking about.
Well, that's because the CPA is the boss, and they probably just expect me to field those questions. We dealt a lot with that, of course, at the tax firm.
Are you familiar with Lamar Smith's HR 1147?
I know Lamar Smith, but you had to tell me which bill it is. I don't know him by number.
It's an E-Verify bill.
Okay, yes.
How do you, what's your position on that?
He's asking about the E-Verify bill that Lamar Smith, he's had it for several Congresses. I support E-Verify. I think we need it. Unfortunately, I don't think that bill's going to go anywhere. We're talking first on the immigration issue about border security. And again, we have taken, kind of mapped out a step-by-step approach on immigration. And before we get around to step two or three, our members want assurances that the hemorrhaging is going to stop and that there are not going to be additional folks that are breaking the law, that are coming here, that are being a national security risk. And so I will just tell you, the Chairman's Bill on National Security, Mike McCall has a border security bill. If we ever hope to get moving on down the road, we have to get that one done first. It's just kind of an agreement that we've all reached.
Thank you. With regards to the Supreme Court decision with the ACA, what will happen if it's shot down? Like, will the states be given different funding, or will the states have to pass their own amendments, or what will be going on with that?
Great question, and my crystal ball is not too clear on this. I mean, I don't know, but I will tell you, we're working every day. We have a sense it will be chaos if you've got seven to eight million people that were counting on something that all at once have to pay it back. So we need to respond in one way, shape, or form. While I personally would just soon see the whole thing repealed and it replaced with our alternative bill, I don't know if any of you actually believe that the President of the United States is going to sign a full repeal bill and sign a replacement bill. That's just unrealistic. And so what we're trying to do at this point is find out what is a solution that conservatives on Capitol Hill can live with that he will come along on. And I will tell you, we have several options. One of them has always been to just give people a tax deduction or a tax credit to go buy insurance in the marketplace and choose whatever they want to, and everyone gets the same benefit. The other option that is actually gaining steam is to block grant. Take the money that was appropriated for the subsidies and block grant that to the states and just let the states decide what they're going to do with that money. And that idea actually is picking up steam in Washington for whatever reason. But I will tell you, we don't have 218 votes in the House yet for anything. And you know, there was a day when the Speaker would walk in our conference and say, "Okay, gang, this is the plan. This is what we're doing." He's learned the hard way a couple of times. That's not the way we operate anymore. Everything we do is pretty organic. We, the members, decide what we're doing. So we're all in the process of visiting with every single member to see what they can live with, what their favorite one, two, and three idea is, and what they are willing to vote for. And once we get to 218 on any one idea, it'll be go time. But you know, some have tried to guess that the Supreme Court might say, you know, rule against the Obama administration, but maybe not make it effective until the end of the calendar year or the middle of next year to give us some time. But I think we all, the prudent thing for us to do is to be ready July 1 with an answer because that's a likely outcome.
So what are the chances, sorry?
No.
What are the chances of like the block grant idea actually like going through? Like do you...
You know, like I said, that is probably the leading idea in the House right now, but I can't even pretend to speak for the Senate, and I don't know that anyone has had a candid conversation with the President about what he would or would not sign in that regard. And I would just imagine that he would want to play hardball on this issue. To date, his position has been, "I'm not going to change Obamacare at all," except for the changes that he made unilaterally without congressional approval, like the changing the subsidy thing. But he has been unwilling to work with us on Capitol Hill on making any changes, even the changes that the Democrats overwhelmingly agree with us on. His position has been no. I mean, I think the stat was, we passed 50 repeal bills. Well, they weren't all repeal bills. Two of them maybe were. The rest of them were all incremental little tiny changes to ACA here, and we voted on several different, and we got Democrats to vote on all of those. And it was great. We thought we had bipartisan support, but his position was, he just drew a long line in the sand, not going to change it. Well, now there's an opportunity for him to change his position and to work with us to get some of those changes made. And so we're still optimistic that he'll work with us, but certainly if I was writing the bill, it would just be a full repeal.
Thank you. I just wanted to ask you about the Patriot Act that's coming up for a vote again to renew. I want you to vote against it. I want you to vote against it. The reason I want you to vote against it is because I was affiliated with the Department of Defense for 34 years. So in that time, you can see the changes that go through. The Patriot Act, when it first came in, was meant to do one thing, and it wasn't meant to be here forever. We don't need it to turn into a militarized state. I want my sheriff to look like the gentleman in the back. I want my police officer to look like the gentleman in the back. They're supposed to look like cops and sheriffs. I don't need to look outside my window, and not saying that Ottawa has one, but I don't need to see an MRAP running down the road like we would use if we were going into Fallujah. So I was just wondering how you felt about this along with it. You know, my police force and my sheriff's department and everything are supposed to be peace officers. They're cops, they're sheriffs. They're supposed to look out for the fact that my rights and my protection are not going to be taken away or broken, or I'm not supposed to get hurt. I'm not supposed to have to necessarily always defend myself, especially against them. The Patriot Act and the NSA, in my opinion, are completely, the Patriot Act doesn't need to be there anymore. The NSA is out of control. We have other agencies in the government that Congress says they oversee. But actually, when you take like the EPA, they're told, "We're going to put this law in. You figure out how to make it work." And so you have laws and then you have regulations and rules, which cost you more than anything in the law ever did. People would be surprised how many of their offices don't need any of the regulations. So how do you feel about, as a congressman, being able to actually go back and look at all these agencies and saying, "We don't need you in our works and get rid of you." And instead of letting them make all the rules, actually tell them how to do their job. The EPA should be told, "We don't need to protect this animal because there are 10 million of them out here. They're not actually endangered." But due to the fact that you have one fish in one part of the pond, and all of a sudden you're going to say, "You can't use your water."
Right. No, you've said that well. I think there is a great frustration among members of Congress right now that we've watched an administration, a president, who says, "I have a pen and a paper, but what he doesn't have is a constitution." That's the piece that's missing here, and we've just been aghast at what he's been willing to do, flying in the face of the Constitution. And the executive amnesty move was just a perfect example of, "You can't do that." And I think we have a couple courts now that are pushing back and have agreed with us, and actually agreed with the president, because he said it 22 times, "I can't do this." And then after the election, did it anyway. And so we've got this constant tension with this president that's a real problem. And I hope it's not a precursor, you know, Republican or Democrat, we should never allow a president to go around and use the executive branch the way that he has. And it's about high time Congress took back that authority. Now, we have tried to do that through the power of the purse. But again, we have passed our appropriation bills in the House. We're very prescriptive with the way that people can use money in the administration and where they can't use the money. But if the Senate never passes an appropriation bill, those never get signed into law. So we have just wasted all this time and effort writing really good law that's never going to get signed into law. So first of all, I think it's a good step that we've got a Senate that's working again. Maybe we can at least get these pieces of legislation to the president where he has to sign it. Now, I'm not overly confident that he would sign away his authority because he's been pretty good at just flaunting it and flying in the face of us. Now, in the Patriot Act, you know, this is a perfect tension between, none of us want to give up our liberty and our freedom for security, but yet we all want security. And I still think it is the number one priority of the federal government to keep us safe. What we in the House have tried to do is find the balance there. And, but the problem is very complicated because you've got the John McCains and the Lindsey Grahams and the Tom Cottons of the world that don't want to make any changes to it. They just want to rubber stamp it. And then you've got the more libertarian wing of the Republican Party that just wants to do away with it. And so those are hard and fast positions that are hard to navigate. So in the House, what we've tried to do is strike a balance between those two and do away with the bulk data collection and the most offensive parts and the abuses that we've all read about, while still giving, you know, the John Boltons of the world some confidence that we're going to allow the bad guys to be caught by the people with the authority to do it, but only the people with the authority to do it. Now, we're not where we need to be right now because neither side has wanted to move, you know, the Tom Cottons and the Rand Pauls or whatever. We're still miles away from getting it resolved, but I think there is a way to thread the needle here. I just can't tell you when and if that's going to happen. It expires, what, at the end of the month? And I'm not sure we'll have a, I just can't guarantee you. I know there's a lot of people, for example, Mike Pompeo's on the National Security Intel Committee, and he will tell you, he won't be sleeping at night if we don't find a way to find the balance. But again, he's had access to the briefings, has found out how effective some of the programs are, and he knows better than any of us, myself included, why we need some of the programs, but certainly we need to do away with the bulk data and a lot of those programs. So I can't tell you where we're going to end up. We're working hard on it, trying to find the right balance.
Sorry, take it again. A minute ago, you mentioned the executive immigration reform. Amnesty, oh, my bad. Long day at work already. Yeah. You mentioned it was unconstitutional. I was just curious, like, what part of the Constitution violates?
Well, the administration doesn't have the authority to write law, and that's what he did. And so I think two courts, at least, have ruled on it already and agreed. And like I said, the constitutional professor said 22 times he couldn't do it. He was right, but the problem was, he just did it anyway. But I'm fairly confident that the courts are going to uphold that rule. I mean, there's just no other way to look at that than what he did was unconstitutional.
Now, the question comes, how do you get rid of it?
The executive amnesty? Well, you know, that's always the hard part. I don't know. I mean, we've still got the issue of all the immigrants that are here illegally and what to do about that problem. But I think, like I mentioned earlier, we think we have a plan set up, but it really requires execution of the plan to be in a thoughtful and systematic order. And, you know, our first step is this border security piece. Then we have a bill that deals with some of the E-Verify issues, farm visas. You know, there are a whole lot of ag producers that rely on immigrant populations. But again, they need, there needs to be a process and a system, and everybody needs to be following the rules because it is a national security issue at the end of the day. And then the last piece is dealing with the folks, you know, that are all here, that we don't even know who they are. But I'm confident we can get there if we do it in this step-by-step approach. And again, whether the president is willing to play ball with us on this, he has had an all-or-nothing approach. He either wants, you know, the amnesty or nothing at all. Well, we may be at a standstill on this issue. This is another one of those issues, we may need a three-to-four-year plan rather than a one-to-two-year plan if we can't ever get where we need to be with this president. Because we're getting a new one. Whether it's somebody you like or not, we're getting a new one. Well, we'll be getting a new one. Who else?
On that topic, who's going to be on the Republican ticket for president?
What are you doing?
Busy that week.
Are you busy that week? Me too. I have no clue. I'm not the sharpest tool in the shed, but I'm not about to bite on that one. Nice try. Yeah.
Lynn, I have a question. It's kind of one you and I have talked about before. First of all, thanks for being here today. And you do a great job of communicating, I think, with your constituents, and thank you for that. This is kind of a local chamber of commerce, kind of an economic development bricks and mortar. I bought something on the internet last night and there was no place for me to pay sales tax. It affects local governments, it affects businesses who have structures to support, and you can go buy and save nine or 10%. We've talked about it. Where is that? Is there such a bill?
There's a couple, but I think we're getting closer on that. He's talking about like the Marketplace Fairness Act. Right now, there are a whole lot of people, and maybe some of us do it in this room, will go down to Best Buy and pick out a TV that we like and try it out. And then you'll get the numbers off of it and go home and order it on Amazon and have it shipped to the house at a discount.
What do you say, exactly?
You're supposed to, but...
I know.
Well, Amazon, I guess, has a nexus in Kansas. That was a bad example. That was a really bad example. Pick a... Well, that's because there's a nexus. We have a location. But if it were for another, from another, you know, Joe Schmo Electronics in Buffalo, New York, it would be shipped here. You would not pay the taxes on it. And they're just, that's becoming widely accepted. You're still supposed to pay tax, but no one does. And there's no way to really audit it and get to the bottom of it. So all of that money is escaping. And what is happening is it's putting many of our downtown businesses out of business because they will just go on the internet and do it. And these guys are paying local property taxes and income taxes right here in your own local community. And so it's really created an unfair playing field. Some are taxing, some aren't. And so there's been legislation, Chairman Goodlatte's had it for years, a Marketplace Fairness Bill. But as you can imagine, some of these big retailers have some pretty hefty lobbies, and they've been successful in squashing the effort. I'm going to support it when it comes to the House in about any form. But right now, I will tell you, Jason Chaffetz from Utah is again trying to find the common ground on this issue, and he really has moved the needle. We are very, very close to getting this. Now, he had gallbladder surgery last week and has been out of the House for about a week, but he'll be back in a few weeks. And he's our Oversight Chairman, and he's been very thoughtful about bringing everybody to the table that has, all the stakeholders, to find out and really listen to them and see what their objection is. And he's a good salesman, too. I think he'll be able to pitch it to our conference. And I'm still optimistic that that's one, because the state of Kansas is hurting because of it. I mean, you know, we hear about what a mess things are in Topeka right now. Well, here is an example of something that we could do at the federal level that would actually help solve the problem if we would. Yeah.
Lynn, I think we all have confidence that the federal government can collect that tax. What we don't have confidence is that we're going to get any of that money back.
Right. Yeah, no, you nailed it. That's exactly right. So we need to provide that assurance in the legislation that people know exactly what's going to happen and where the money's going. It's a fairness issue. Anything else? Yes?
Polish off your crystal ball. Do you think that the president will try to be in the Supreme Court in about three years?
I keep, if he gets a Democrat elected president...
He's not going to.
He's a young man, for heaven's sake. What else is there to aspire to?
You know, I hadn't thought of that. The only way you assure that doesn't happen is you elect a Republican to the president. So there, any of you that are concerned about that? Yeah, you know what you need to do. Well, I'll give some of you that are quieter and don't want to speak in front of the whole group an opportunity to visit with me individually. I do appreciate you coming out. Don't wait for me to come to town. If you have a question, concern, some advice and counsel, just pick up the phone and call us or shoot us an email. Bill is here, or no, sorry, Lee. Bill sometimes is with me. Lee is with me from our Topeka office. And Bill, I was going to introduce with Moran's office, is in the back. So if you want to yell at Senator Moran, I'm on my way to the VA after Osage City where I'm going to catch up with the boss man. We're going to have a meeting at the VA, so I'll tell him that you've been at all the town halls today. So, okay, thank you. If you want to visit with me individually, I'll just stay here for a minute. Thank you. I'm not sure how to...